Okay, we're going to call this study session to order. It's August 7th on 2023, and it's about 5:03. So this is a study session, so it's a little bit different than what we do as far as council goes. No action will be taken, although a general direction could be given. It is more a discussion on whatever our process is. I thought it would be important, because we've had a lot of discussion about the water. So we have with us Regina Grimm from the Department of Health. We also have Matt Tobert from our Water Department and Ricky Victorian?
Victorian.
Okay, Victorian, from our Water Department, to answer the city questions. There's been numerous emails that have gone back and forth, as well as Zoom conversations with it. So I thought it was important that we just have the discussion about where we are with our water, what we're working on, and then the council ultimately will make decisions of whatever we do going forward. So the process we'll do is that we'll have our presenters present first, whatever they're going to present. Then we'll open it up to council questions and discussions, and then we'll open it up to citizens for whatever their questions are. My hope is that we can be very respectful of one another to have whatever the conversations are, that we will take one question at a time from the citizens, and then we'll rotate back through with it. So with that, then I will turn it over to Regina.
Regina, everyone, I'm Regina Grimm. I'm with the Washington State Department of Health and South Coast Regional Office of the Office of Drinking Water. I'm currently the Assistant Regional Manager. I used to be one of the regional engineers in the office, and Grace Harbor County was one of my assigned counties. So I've come today, the request of the city, to, in my view, help clarify the water quality concerns, the status of the Cross-Mesh Control Program, and the water monitoring compliance status, and also to answer any questions people might have. Just as a little background, earlier this spring, our office got a call from some people who were concerned about some issues they felt with the water system. And we're always grateful that people call and take seriously any complaints and try to follow up with them the best we can. So we know people also always feel welcome to contact us. Myself and a couple other people in our office, we followed up on some of the concerns, with all the concerns. They were in three main categories, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. I'm not sure the best way, if you want to, you know, I could talk about the history up until of what actions I took, that might be the approach. So one concern was about the implementation of the Cross-Connection Control Program and the current status of that. The Cross-Connection Control Program is a state-of-Washington requirement, and the purpose is to prevent any accidental contamination of the main drinking water system from any activities that are occurring on individual properties. So people have your private property, and you have things you can do on your property or different uses of the property, like there might be a hospital or a veterinary clinic or just residential homes where you might have a swimming pool. So there's many different things that happen on properties, but sometimes what happens can contaminate the drinking water. If there is an event where there's pressure loss in the system, in the main drinking water system, and that can cause what we call backside drainage. Or sometimes there might be something where there's a pump being used on the private property, and that can force water from the private property back into the distribution system. So the Cross-Connection Control Program is, it's an ongoing implementation program. It's never really done. The way the regulation was developed, it was something where we trained people to be certified as specialists in that topic, called Cross-Connection Control Specialists. And then the Cross-Connection Control Specialist is supposed to develop the specific program for the water system that they're working with. They can either be working under contract, or they can actually be employed by a local water system. But they work to develop the program, and after that program's been developed, then the utility develops some documents to enforce the program. So for a city like this, you would have it into your ordinances. And that's what would be used to actually have the teeth behind making sure that it's implemented. Part of evaluating for potential hazards is actually doing some kind of customer survey, usually is what we recommend, which is what recently the city has done, and asking the property owners if they have any of the certain types of things that would be considered a higher hazard, that we'd want to have a testable device installed or even lesser levels of backflow protection, like a check valve or an air vacuum breaker. So the city does have a Cross-Connection Control Program. They do have an ordinance, and they do have a Cross-Connection Control Specialist on staff, so they're in compliance with those. But based on our follow-up and the complaint, we found that they haven't done a customer survey, so they haven't fully identified all the play properties where there could be some kind of risk. And then also where there have been devices installed, it looked like they hadn't done all their annual testing, which is part of the requirements. So I gave them, in follow-up to the concerns, I gave deadlines for completing those two things. It's a big city. It takes time to do all that evaluation, you know, for every property, see what's there, and it also takes time for people to install devices if it's needed. So the deadline I gave for just even doing the survey, you know, getting all that information together, is October 1st, and then my expectation is that the city will let property owners know that it's going to have to be installed, and then work out some of the deadlines with them for installing them. At the time those are installed, they will be tested as part of the installation process. And then any current devices that are currently there, those will need to be tested by the end of the year, which is December 31st of 2023. So I appreciate, you know, the public bringing that to our attention, and I do think that with those actions, they'll bring them into minimal compliance. Some recommendations I have are to make sure that their Cross-Connection Control Program itself is matching their current practices and that their ordinance is matching their current practices. Once those are developed, they usually don't need a lot of updating unless the city has decided to do things differently than what was originally in the ordinance or in the program. One thing that, one reason I gave a deadline to was I was not aware that there are so many people pumping water out of the canal for irrigation, or that there are any. And there's a couple of reasons that's considered a risk. One is when someone's using a pump, that could overcome the pressure into the water system if they happen to hook it up, meaning to or not meaning to. If they hooked it up to their home, that could get back into the system through the pressure in the pump theoretically. So the other issue is that, you know, people on their private property, the public doesn't, the city does not have access to go on the property at any time. So things can change from when they might have checked at one point during the survey till sometime later, or maybe a new property owner moves in, and they don't understand or know about that they need to make sure they're irrigating from the canal is to be separate from their potable supply. So because of that risk and uncertainty, our recommendation is that those locations or those properties have a testable backflow device. The second category of concerns we're getting was about water quality. The city has an extensive list of water quality testing that we're required to do. I noticed in the packet they've included their annual water quality monitoring report. This is required by all water systems, just to prepare this annually. And the information they're required to put in the table for sampling results are anything that was detected. So they do, this just shows what was detected in the system. It doesn't show everything that was monitored for. We have several categories of sampling they do. They do monthly coliform sampling for coliform bacteria. They do lead and copper sampling, that's every, I think it was every three years. Yes, every three years. They do disinfection byproduct monitoring, which is required for any system that chlorinates, and that's done annually. They sample for asbestos, and that's every nine years. And those are all in the distribution system. The sources are tested for three main categories of chemicals. One's called inorganic chemicals, includes nitrate, which is annually arsenic every three years. And then a general suite of inorganic chemicals, which are tested every nine years. And then VOCs are also tested. Those are volatile organic chemicals. They come from petroleum-type products. Those are required every six years, and then radiolutealizer every six years. There's also another category of synthetic organic chemicals, and that was one concern brought up. A lot of those have a waiver, which is a state, you know, a state waiver, which is statewide, and then some of them are county-specific. So based on the fact that canals where they use herbicides to keep down vegetation, there was a concern that that could be putting the sources at risk, and that the testing was being waived. So one thing we did was we worked with Ricky to find out what chemicals are being used in the canal, what is being applied. And the majority of those are not ones that are included in the regulatory suite that water systems are required to test for. Diquat is one of them. It was given a statewide waiver. But we looked at the distance to the wells and the depth of the groundwater compared to what the depth of water in the canal. And we didn't feel like it, based on how we assess the risk and do the waivers, we didn't feel like that we weren't changing the waiver. There's nothing that prevents the city from sampling what they want to sample. So my understanding is they were actually going to do some sampling because, you know, they wanted these folks concerned. The other concern about water quality was what people were calling "clap slime." That was inside people's homes. One thing to just clarify is that in regulating public water systems, we're regulating the sources, so it's pumped out of the ground, and then also what is supplied in the distribution system up until the customer service meter. We consider the responsibility of the city to stop at the meter because they don't have control over what happens internally on a person's property. So we don't recommend people, they go on people's homes and sample. And also, there is no regulatory test for, in the drinking water, requirements for mold, for iron bacteria, or manganese bacteria, which is the other two I thought it could be causing. There might be something to look at. However, the city did decide to test for those. They tested, they offered to test in people's homes. And they also tested a couple of locations within the distribution system itself to see, you know, as a comparison. And there was a species of mold that showed up in a customer's homes, or a couple of customers' homes, and it did not show up in the distribution piping. To me, that would make sense because the distribution system is chlorinated, and that would kill the mold and keep it, if there was any, keep it from growing. So I'm really not sure what's causing the mold inside the taps, other than, I know mold is attached, it tends to grow in moist locations, but that is, we don't have a standard for mold in drinking water regulation. It's not something that cities are required to test for, though. So although there was a test result, I can't say whether or not, I think it was 17, or what the number was, but I don't have any standard to compare that to, to even say whether or not that's a concern or not. So I don't know that that answers folks' questions about that, but that, it's just not something that we regulate. I was trying to be helpful to the city and answer their, give ideas for what might be causing, or for evaluating whether or not the water supply itself might be causing the issue. I reviewed their water quality treatment reports, which are submitted monthly. There's a copy of that in here. I looked at their distribution residuals, their chlorinate levels. What they've been maintaining in their distribution is pretty nice, high level of 1.5 or 0.5 to 1, depending on the day of the location. So that would kill any, like if there's iron bacteria or manganese bacteria, it would kill that. But one thing I want to point out, especially the iron bacteria and manganese bacteria, those are considered aesthetic issues. They're not something that we would consider a health risk. It's not regulated as a health risk. It's not even regulated under the secondary standards, which is the group of testing requirements related to aesthetic problems. So I'm not really sure. I don't, I think that that's not something that is being caused by the water supply. And all the testing that the city's been doing for many years shows that the water is safe to drink, that there aren't any issues going on. In fact, we used to get a very large number of complaints from ocean shores up until about 2011, when they installed their new treatment plant. You know, they used to be notorious for having discolored water, brown, because of the iron and manganese. And those are aesthetic problems. They'll make the water look impalatable, but it's not, it doesn't cause the water to be unsafe. But in 2011, they installed a pretty complicated, sophisticated treatment plant because the chemistry is pretty difficult to treat. And it's actually been working really well. I looked at quite a few years of the history of the treatment performance, and they're getting good removal of iron and manganese and color. And I think it was also TSC sampling or removing. So I didn't see anything in my review of the water quality and all the testing that's under the regulatory requirements indicate that there's a problem with the water quality. So I think that was maybe, I think one other, oh, I think one other question was, or concern was about flushing the lines. Water system, distribution flushing is something that water systems are supposed to do. It's part of regular maintenance of the distribution lines. Distribution lines, I don't know if you've ever taken a pipe apart and you see like this slimy stuff on the inside. They tend to get a biofilm accumulation. Also, because ocean shores have so much iron and manganese in their water, they, for quite a few years, they did extensive flushing to try to get all that accumulation out of the system after the new treatment was put on line. So whenever a water, a line is flushed, it's totally normal. You'll see when it first starts flushing, and if the high-velocity flow goes through, it's designed to actually scour out those pipes. And anything that's attached to the pipe, the natural biofilm that's attached to the pipe, it's just trying to scrape it out. So you'll see, like, when they first start to open up the hydrant, like this, and the waters, the high-flowed water's coming out, you'll see, like, it looks pretty dark and brown. And then as they continue to flush, it'll clear up. And that's totally expected during flushing. Our recommendation is to notify customers that they're going to flush in a certain area prior to that, so they aren't scared, you know, they aren't concerned or scared about all sudden waters and wrong color. The, but we don't have, like, a regulatory requirement that says specifically a timeframe or that, you know, any compliance related to whether or not it's done. We look at it as more of a customer service, and it's part of the standard best practices to do that. And there's several methods of notification that we recommend, like, it's very common. You might put the sandwich boards where they put in, like, a location where they're going to flush. Sometimes they'll put door hangers on people's doors. I think it just depends on the size of the area, the number of customers that they expect to be, you know, they want to let know. And they'll usually have, like, you know, the general time, like, it's going to happen on a certain date or a couple, maybe a certain week. So I've seen different methods for systems to do it, and it's kind of, we leave it up to them on whether we think this is the best way for them to communicate with their customers. Like I said, it's not, there's no compliance requirement related to that. And then, you know, sometimes the water, when it is flushed, it will, because it sort of stings up if someone's in their home and they happen to turn on their faucet, it will get the same dirty water coming out of their faucet. So our recommendation is that if people notice that in their own home, to flush their own spigots or faucets until they see the water clear up. One way, a good way to know that the water is fresh is that when you turn on your faucet and you'll notice that it becomes cooler, that means you're getting water that's coming, it's gotten through your home all the way, and you're getting fresh water from the distribution piping. So I think those were the main issues that we've followed up on with the complaints.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the council. Council, got questions? Okay, so Rich.
Thank you for coming down. One of the, one of the things I've heard is that some people seem uncomfortable with the fact that certain tests aren't done every year. Talk to us about why the state gives waivers for testing certain contaminants annually. What's the thought process to talk between why some things are three years, or some things are nine years, or some things are annually?
Okay. It's mostly a risk-based analysis. Things that, there's a couple that are acute risks, like coliform, something that could make someone sick if you get Ebola or something. It's just, someone can get sick from that just from drinking the water once. So that has the highest frequency, and it's not required monthly. The city this size, you guys are doing 10 tests per month. Nitrate is the second kind of tier of acute risk. It's similar where some, like a baby is particularly could be harmed when drinking water with elevated nitrate. So that's why it has an annual frequency. The rest of the contaminants are chemicals under the primary MTL, which are the group of chemicals that have a health risk base, are considered chronic. So it's something that some women need to drink over a long period of time to create the health risks that are associated with it. So it's basically like a cost-benefit thing, looking at the risk of contamination and the cost that it would be incurred by testing frequently. So the frequency allowed, it was set up based on that. I think it's also based on the likelihood of there being any change. So some things like, you know, asbestos is every nine years, but if it's not an issue in the system, the city's a sample twice, there's been longer tests. So some of it's just, if it's, I think, the longer time span is allowed because the likelihood that it's going to be an issue is not very high. Some things were, I did, I was talking with, Sophia's our specialist in the source monitoring. She couldn't make it today, but the thing we were talking about was why waivers were even allowed, you know, why do that? And I guess when the rules came out in the monitoring requirements for search required in the 1990s by EPA, EPA allowed that option, and the state legislature in Washington State directed the Department of Health to allow that option, to develop a waiver model. So that's why that was included as an option. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, or Frank?
I just wanted to clarify that I understood you correctly. So the Department of Health does not require a flushing program for the hydrants?
It's something that we recommend that water systems do. And I think we require, it's, I have to look it up to see if it's actually required. They do flushing at some point in the regulation. But the process of how it's done and the frequency is not, is more system-specific depending on what's going on with the system and the needs. So it's more of a goal-oriented thing. So if there's areas where there's stagnant water, or maybe a water system has trouble maintaining the chloram residual because there's like a dead end and nobody's using the water, then they might need to flush in that area pretty frequently. When we do our sanitary survey inspections, and we talk with the operator about their flushing, we recommend that it's done once a year at a minimum. But it really is more system-specific on when it would be needed. I know ocean shores, like I said, you know, because of the water quality problems in the past, they were doing them pretty frequently. And there's different things that would trigger flushing, like one is if a customer complains about discolored or poor taste in their water. It might be that it's just getting, you know, kind of old and stagnant, so you can flush the lines to get fresh water in the area. Another reason to flush is if there's a water main that was repaired or a new one that's installed, they need to, that's part of actually, that is a requirement. That needs to be flushed in that area that was affected. If the system was on oil-water advisory and they were disinfecting the system, that would be another reason that would be flushed.
But generally, it's just a recommendation, not a requirement?
I think, yeah, the system should flush, but you said, you know, how it's actually done is not specified, so.
Sure.
So I want to thank you too for coming all the way down here just to help us understand our water system a lot better, and it's helped me a whole lot. And I've just, you know, I know we said this, but from the state's perspective and the testing that we do and everything that's happened, you don't see any issues or any problems with ocean shores water that is reasonably safe to drink.
Yes, I haven't, in all the water quality testing, I haven't seen anything that shows it's unsafe.
Any other questions from council before we go to public? Richard?
There was a question about potential for saltwater incursion.
Do they spring flowers?
There was a question about saltwater incursion. Have you guys evaluated that potential? As I read our water quality reports, they say it has quite negligible. Any other information?
I think I'm prepared to talk about that, but in general, being as close to saltwater, that can always be a risk. One way that water systems can evaluate that is by monitoring. One way that water systems can evaluate that is by monitoring the salinity and the chloride levels and seeing if they change over time. So, some, a lot of water will have that naturally occurring, but if you're, when there's saltwater intrusion, you'll just see that, that increase over time. There actually is no MCL for salt. There's a health recommendation for notifying customers who have low-salt diets, so that they know that it's an issue.
Matt, you can speak too. We actually have a plan for that, for monitoring.
Colorblind. Yeah, the city has a sentinel well down on the Ocean Lake Way B's approach that we monitor monthly, and we take our chloroform bacteria samples. So, we've watched that closely to make sure those chloride levels aren't coming up. And it's been pretty balanced since we started. We developed a baseline and we monitor it monthly to watch for that saltwater intrusion.
Frank, you had a question?
Yeah, you gave us a deadline for the surveys. Did you give us a deadline to get all the cross-connections inspected?
The inspection was the end of December, or not, oh, for having them on. I thought about giving a deadline for having them on salt, but that's pretty difficult to manage. You don't have control over what the customers do. It's kind of, you know, you're, it's kind of like a back-and-forth thing. The customer says they're having, they have control over what happens on the property, so if they decide to have something that the city would consider a hazard, the city says, okay, you have to install this device. Then the customer has to go and install it. So, it's usually, typically, it's on the customer's class because it's their choice to have the, whatever they're doing on their own property. So, trying to enforce that installation is something that should be handled through your ordinance. So, I would, rather than giving a deadline for every single being, one being installed, I didn't think that would work.
How about for, yeah, how about testing the existing ones?
Testing, anything that's installed already, that's a reverse-pressure backflow assembly or devil check valve assembly, which are the two tests of all kinds, those should need to be done annually. So, I would say as a minimum. So, I gave a deadline for the end of December to have those done. I didn't give a deadline, I didn't give a deadline for the new ones, because part of the installation for new ones is to test it, to make sure it's working.
Sure. Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I, first of all, we're getting, just wanted to thank you, just the conversations we've had, you really helped clarify things to me as well. But one of the things that we're discussing is, you know, we're a town of about 7,000 and a half people, and the question is, do we want to hire, do we need to hire, and what other cities do, cross-connection control specialists? And that would be their job. Do most cities our size have that? Is it something you recommend? I realize we're different than a lot of the cities our size, because of the sheer number of hotels we have, being a tourist town. We have discussed that with our staff internally, I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
I think, I think it's a very big workload and I think, especially since you, it'll take a while to get kind of up to speed, get everything up to speed, it's definitely going to take someone, I think it probably takes someone full-time. You can purchase software that is specifically designed to help manage all this. There's different companies that sell software for managing backflow control program. And it'll do a lot of things automatically, so your staff doesn't have to do it, like generating a letter to send to people to remind them to test annually, check to see, it'll have a database to see which ones, which addresses require a testing. So, just even getting that program up and going and populated all the information would take a lot of time. So, I think probably, yeah, I think, one thing that's unusual about your system is that you have a really complicated treatment split plan. And it takes a lot more oversight than normal groundwater wells would. So, that means you have more time that your operators need to spend on the, just maintaining and operating the treatment system than other groundwater systems your size. So, that means they're just not going to have as much time to do something like this. A lot of cities have, actually, some operators will handle the treatment side, and then they'll have staff that handle more the distribution side, so they'll do, like, the chloroform sampling, any distribution sampling, liquidated copper, and then they'll have, they'll handle the cross-discontrol program. So, it's a lot of times how it's split.
Okay, council, any other questions before we go to public? Okay, public, one question at a time and then we'll rotate back through. So, Scott, you give the time. So, questions?
My mom was subjected to thyroid cancer, and to a lot of people, they think it's genetic, but it's not really. It's, could be genetic, but it's also environmental, from the drinking water that we had. My dad had to take the samples of our water, our drinking water, to the Department of Health to get them to put in chlorine into our drinking water, so this doesn't happen to anybody anymore. So, my mom developed cancer from this. Okay, now, the installation of the black backflow valves, who's paying for this? Is it coming out of our pockets if we have, going to be subjected to having those things installed at our home? Does anybody know? And, I don't know, I'm not supposed to suggest, you guys, you guys can tell us later.
Well, no, this is the state session, so we can answer the question. So, I think Ricky and Ricky and Matt can answer that question.
So, right now, what the plan is for this backflow assembly stuff is our city ordinance states that it's a customer's responsibility to manage that. So, if we tell you you need it, then you're paying for it, you're hiring someone to install it, or whatever, you know, like Regina stated, in the case of, you know, residential place, if we require it, there's a reason. So, there's some sort of hazard that you're creating in that residence or in that premise that requires a backflow device. So, you either, you know, eliminate that hazard, or you install a backflow device.
The reason I'm asking you this is because you understand that the people that live here, a lot of us are on fixed income.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other thing that you mentioned...
Noni, the rule is one question, one question per person, then we'll cycle back.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So, Michael, I saw your hand up.
Before you get something, I'd like to say that the vast majority of people will not need to install a backflow device. Can you just tell us really briefly what the parameters are for when we know we're going to have to install it, because that's not going to apply in the vast majority?
Yeah, so, majority of, so the, you know, the two categories of a backflow device being required is a low health hazard and a high health hazard. And there's a WAC code for all the high and severe, or I guess just the severe health hazards. So, you know, like, really, any, any regular residents in town that will require one would be irrigation, or it's required on fire sprinkler systems. If you have transient metal ones in, and I think in Ocean Shores, it's required that you have a fire sprinkler system. You know, if you have something like liquid x-ray stuff in your house, I mean, then we would require it. But, you know, a majority of the, of the people in Ocean Shores will not be subject to installing a backflow assembly.
That's good news, thank you.
Okay, Michael?
Okay, so, my concern is the black slime. When we first moved into our house, and it was built in 2016, we had a real huge issue with black slime. And my wife got pretty concerned about it. So, what she does, she goes around to all our spigots, all our faucets, our showerheads, and she bleaches and scrubs a hell out of each one of them. The outside spigots also, because she was concerned about our dogs drinking water. Now, that being said, I'm 67. I've lived in homes that were 80 years old, and I've developed property and built our, a custom home. And never in my whole entire life have I had black slime coming out of a refrigerator with filtered water. So, there's got to be an answer to this. I know my neighbor, he just moved in two months ago, and the lady, I guess, never did any upkeep on her house. And he was so shocked about how clogged his faucets were and his hedge, his showerheads. He's been there for two months and he's already got colored-in water service, because he's really concerned about what's coming out of there. So, there has to be a reason for why the black slime happens. Now, ours seems to come and go right now. We don't have it as often as we used to. And I think, I give that credit to my wife for how she's cleaning everything. But still, what is causing it? Because, like I said, my whole entire life, I've never seen that in any home I've ever lived in. So, something has to be causing it. Something is not normal, whether it's in the system or in the homes, how they're being built. And I think people deserve an answer to that question. And I don't know if you guys can work on that, tell us what it is, or if we got to go to the state. It's not normal to get a glass of water and see the water coming out sideways, and then I go up in there with a Q-tip and pull out a bunch of black stuff. That ain't normal. I've never seen it. So, someone has to step up to the plate and say, okay, we got a problem here, we got to do some investigation, figure it out. So, whether it's from the state, or the local guys, or the mayor, or whoever, I would like to see an answer to what the problem is. Thank you.
So, one of, one of the things that during the past couple of years, that we did do the flushing, we're going to be more aggressive on the flushing part of it. We'll put together a plan. We have, we've started identifying areas that are opportunities for us. We still have, some of the, some of the issue that we will have is that it's our water source. However, one of the things that, and Ricky and Matt probably can talk a little bit more of, some of the things that we're doing, or what you're seeing in, in different houses that we've had just us in.
I wonder if I follow up to that, real quick. There's been a whole lot of new homes on my section of Mount Olympus where I live. Is it possible that all those new homes going in is flushing the water through and making it so that the problem isn't as bad? Because there's a natural flush going through with these new homes going in? I don't know if that's helping.
Yeah, absolutely. What happens in the distribution system is, in the low-flow areas and the dead ends, like the cul-de-sacs, we don't have that constant movement through there, and we get this stagnant condition, which decreases the chlorine residual. So, as you add homes and add more demand to that system, it's absolutely going to make a difference for you.
One thing I recommended, that it's not a regulatory requirement, but we were talking about what would be causing that, I wondered if it could be manganese bacteria, which, because before the treatment system went online, you had a buildup of manganese in the pipes. And the city did a lot of flushing, tried to clean all that out, but you can't really get it all cleaned out. And if you, like you were saying, if there are areas where the chloro residual is decreasing, then if there is any kind of manganese bacteria, and the chlorine is keeping that down, that could be what's causing it. So, you could take some investigative samples to just try to see. There is, like I said, no standard for manganese bacteria, it's not even something that's required to test for. But, that's the only thing I could kind of think of that might be causing it, I did some research. And it, it would be black, and it, either iron bacteria or manganese bacteria, it's kind of gloppy and it's kind of slimy. So, it definitely doesn't, you know, it doesn't look like appetizing, you know, it doesn't, makes you, I wouldn't want to see it either, coming out of my sink. But, part of what we, in our office, what we look at is, like, things that are, the health, the sampling or the requirements are based on, like, a health risk versus aesthetic. So, we would put that in more the category of, like, makes the water, makes it look bad, and I don't know if it has a smell to it, but it's not something that would be harmful, helps. But I think the chloro residual is one thing they could do is, if it is manganese bacteria, they could try to boost the chlorine levels in certain areas where they are having problems with it decreasing. Or they could just have automatic flushers, so ways to try to keep fresher water coming through. One of the people we spoke with that was concerned, she said that after they did flushing, after like, for maybe a week or so, it did seem like it helped reduce it a little bit. So, what would make sense to me is they got fresh water through their, higher chlorine residual, and that made me, you know, killed more of the, any bacteria that was forming. So, that's something I, I'd recommend, but it's like, you know, it's not something that is a regulatory requirement.
I, I know that Ricky wants to say something, but I have a comment, I first a comment and then, and then a question. The comment is, my, my house also had this, because prior to my daughter, you know, we never use the upstairs bathroom. After we ran it for two, three months, it was gone, it went away. But you also mentioned that water heaters are other, such as an issue that might, so tell us about some of the other things that are in the house itself, that not associated with the city's water system, but in the house that might cause this?
So, I'm not sure that water heaters would really attribute to the mold itself or the bacteria. But I guess a newer discovery on this is, you know, it's, we've constantly been trying to figure out, you know, what is, what could be causing it, or, you know, what this could be stemming from. You know, page is 3851 is the last round of testing we did, and we actually just got new sample bottles in to do more testing tomorrow. And I was out at a house on Mount Olympus on Friday morning, trying to help a customer with the black slime growing in his house. I come to find out that, you know, he had a whole house filter that he didn't know was removing all the chlorine from the water. And a big part of, you know, and Regina can attest to this, is a big part of, you know, combating or removing or keeping that mold from growing is the chlorine residual in the water. That's, you know, it's present, there is to find out any possible contaminants in the, I guess, line of transmission, or, you know, once it gets in the household, anything it might be. You know, right on the road, we had a, I think it was like a .8 milligram per liter chlorine residual, and after his filter, there was a .06 milligram per liter. And he, and we had just ran it, flushed his line to try and bring in fresh chlorine residual to try and get it higher. It wasn't, so we went looking further and found out that, you know, in talking with him, found out that he had a carbon rat filter that was actually removing the chlorine from his water. And so, that, that could be a big issue, you know, if, that'll be probably my first question that I ask in the future, if someone calls the office to discuss it. You know, just, I want to get what sort of, I guess, post-meter chemistry is there going on, so.
I'm going to the person right in glasses of the sem, right?
Yeah. We just moved into Ocean Shores about a year ago, and want to piggyback off of the black slime. The, the thing that we are getting every once in a while is a sensation of slipperiness in the water. In other words, when you take a shower, there are some days when you feel like you can't get the soap off. Is that something that is normal for us here in Ocean Shores, that we have that in the water, that kind of a slippery feel? Is that some kind of a, maybe salt or sodium or some, some chemical in the water?
Do you have a water softer?
No.
Okay. Because that will, we have what's, we had really hard water with the other source, and now that we switched to the new source, we're about half of what we were. So, you know, you can attribute it to that, but you're a new, new citizen in town, so you can't look back on that. Yeah, normally that's due to soft water.
I mean, it's, and every once in a while, we'll get the smell, but it's more like the drain versus the incoming water. And so, it's something maybe towards the sewer line. But the slipperiness was something else of concern. Thank you.
Jane?
Hello, hi Regina. I'd like to say hello and apologize, because I've been pronouncing your first name wrong. So, it's nice to finally meet you. Talking about the black slime, and everybody's touched on it, and I just want to point out that some of the things have been said, manganese. So, the tests, if you look in your packets, the tests are there, and there were three hundred... So the tests, if you look in your packets, the tests are there and there were three homes that were tested. And if you look at those tests, it says that there is an abundance of manganese. So that is part of the problem. Then you all actually touched on how much chlorine is going through the lines and this could be doing. You keep stating that at the plant and everything, the chlorine's fine, but I have not heard anybody say touch it and they'll come back. As the water department says, we have problems with the dead end lines and all of that. Chlorine may not be getting there, everything. So once again, to me, that would say, that is how, part of the reason we are getting the black slime. It shows on the test that there's an abundance of manganese, um, because on the dead ends, I know Mount Olympus has a lot of problems on their road, but it's not, it's not dead end. But I also wanna say, I understand there's no regulation for testing for mold and bacteria, but on those test results, the mold and bacteria that was found in those homes, the Mercuro, Mercur, uh, Rassamosas, and I probably butchered it, and a couple of those do cause health concerns. Excessive manganese actually cause health issues in people. You can look it up anywhere or I can provide you with the information. I have it printed out. And especially in people with autoimmune disease, um, anywhere from children to elderly people with diabetes, that those, that mold bacteria does affect those people. Um, and so I'm like with my, I, and I understand because there's areas that have it, areas that don't have it. So I, I wanna know, going forward, instead of just saying the black mold is coming from their home, and this is one thing that I've stated, Regina, you've heard this from me before. I have a video of the flushing that was fifteen feet from my home. It looked like, everybody said, was that sewage? Not my words, but that's what people who viewed it looked at. And that's what it looked like to me also. I understand flushing moves all that through, but if that's in the line anyways, how can you tell me that wasn't getting in my home? Or amplifying the prob, the problem? And then on top of it, the city did say that you flushed at distribution points and the disre, distribution lines were clear. I would like the line checked by my home where that came out, where the issues are at. Where the line was checked was at the fire station where water is flowing frequently all the time through it and the chlorine is able to be pushed through it. So tho, those are just some of my questions on the black slime issue and I have follow-up if.
So Ricky, could you, could you respond to the testing?
Um, yeah, so first of all, I'd like to clarify that the fire station, um, that, well, we call it the fire station sampling point. It's actually the old fire station location right at the end of Canal Drive and J.K. Lewis.
Okay.
And so it's a lot closer to your, um, service line than you thought, but, um, so, uh, I guess that was the main thing. You know, this mold that we found, the mold bacteria that we found was in the, you know, the kitchen sinks that we took samples from. But it wasn't in our sampling point, so, you know, we haven't said at this point, you know, it's your problem to deal with it, but, you know, we're still trying to figure out where it comes from and what's causing it. You know, like I said, we, we, the biggest part of it is waiting for results. So, um, you know, we, we waited probably close to two months for these because they actually had to do a culture to determine the, uh, to speciate the mold bacteria. And so that, that's, you know, it's just a, it's, it's still a work in progress.
Okay. So my question, my follow-up to that would be.
One, one, one question, one question at a time and then.
Can I follow up to what you just answered?
Go ahead.
So my question would be, with everything that came out of that line there, the problems that we know that are going on in my home, and you saying that, because in my area is one of the ones that's in the cul-de-sac, so it is more susceptible from everything you have said, why can't we test in that area then? Closer to that area since you, you've already said that most likely we're not getting the chlorine, we're not getting this, we're not getting that.
So we, we, I'm not sure what you mean by that, cause we didn't test any residents.
Why can't you test the distribution line in that area?
So, uh, our sample points that are already installed, and Matt could probably tell you more about those, they were, uh, you know, instead of going into customers' homes and bugging them to take samples every month, what they did, um, was install sample points. So it's a straight one inch line tab off of the main line that is, uh, shut and secured and then we open them up once a month and sample from them. So, and Matt can probably, uh, expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, what you saw from the blow-off valve in front of your house is, uh, it's much like a fire hydrant. The runout pipe from the water main to the fire hydrant is sitting and waiting and, and what you're seeing, anytime you open any fire hydrant down, you'll see red water, very dark, black for about the first, I don't know, twenty, thirty seconds. And then you're getting water from the water main. Same thing on your cul-de-sac. That blow-off valve is iron pipe at the end of the main and it's just sitting there. There's no service lines tapped off of it. It's just strictly for flushing purposes and that's what you're seeing.
But it is getting water from the water system?
It is, yes. And it's a dead end right there. That's the end of the main. So we could certainly test for mold at that point. We could certainly do that by putting a riser on there.
I, I would appreciate that, but not just mold, but the manganese, since that, that was already found abundant and it's been mentioned over and over that that is an issue.
Sure. Yeah, we could do the same test, a microscopic and a, and a mold.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Regina, I just got a question on, so you say that we have, there's a range of what you can put chlorine into the water. Um, and I, I'm assuming that we're kind of on the low side right now?
Actually, when I looked at their chlorine reports, they were not low. Um, it seemed like they ranged at the treatment plant from point eight or so to one milligram per liter, which is, um, the, the minimum detectable residual we consider to be point two. If you go anything above one, you tend to get customer complaints. It kinda depends on the system. It did, it did seem like there was a chlorine demand though, cause, uh, which means, um, well, you have a total dosage of chlorine and you can measure that what we call total chlorine, so it's the total amount of chlorine in the water. And then there's this other kind of a subset of that we call free chlorine. And it's the amount of chlorine that's still active and available to interact with bacteria or anything else that would, would interact with chlorine. So that's actually what we use for, when we say we wanna maintain a minimum chlorine residual, that's what we're looking for. We wanna know what's still available to kill things it comes in contact with. So when I looked at the disinfection reports, um, if there's no chlorine demand, what, what you see when this, at the source will be the same, um, distribution system. So like with point eight entering into exiting the treatment plant into distribution, if there's no chlorine demand, it'll be about point eight everywhere in the system. But it did seem like it dips down a bit. So that means it's interacting with something in the distribution system. It could be manganese, maybe it's killing, or maybe if there is manganese bacteria, it's actually interacting with it, killing that. So, um, I think the dosages are high enough, but I mean, it's just making sure that you have residual everywhere in your system. One thing historically, I know they boosted chlorine, which means like they'd have the, the original injection of the chlorine at the treatment plant and then somewhere downstream in distribution, they had a couple extra treatment locations where they would add a bit additional chlorine to get the levels up again. And that was needed before the, the new treatment plant was installed, but maybe that's something that was helping or it maybe would be helpful. But even if you do boost the chlorine, just, um, as the water sits stagnant, it will naturally decrease. So anywhere that water's just not free, not full, you are getting fresh water replacing the, you know, and turnover, you're gonna get a dip, a dip in the free chlorine levels. It'll, the total chlorine will still be there, but the free chlorine will just gradually get used up. Some of it could just be interacting with the walls of the pipe or things like that.
So, so Matt, if we wanted to increase the chlorine, could we, or could we do, do just partially?
Oh yeah, we have the ability to do that.
Okay, so we have, so we could, we could do a section of the city? Or, or do you have to do the whole system?
Yeah, since we, since the water comes out at the water treatment plant, it's, uh, it's hard to do just a portion of the city. You know, you, you kinda have to make your adjustments and then go out in the field and measure those. And so the people around the water treatment plant, sometimes they get a little hammered by chlorine, but the people at the jetty are quite a bit lower. So it's a, it's a balancing act and, and we have to do that. We take, uh, distribution chlorine residuals on a daily basis, just so we know where we're at.
Okay, uh, more questions? Jan.
Thank you for coming and attending. Uh, I appreciate the fifty-page document that I certainly could've used it a little earlier than today. As far as you two gentlemen, you mentioned that they have, we have testing areas throughout the city that you test monthly. Uh, can you tell us how many testing areas there are and do you do ten percent a month? Or do you test every one a month?
We do them all on a monthly basis and they're spread out strategically around the city, so it covers the whole distribution system. Now, there's ten of them, I'm sorry.
Well, ten testing areas for our seven miles of.
Yeah.
Okay, would more be, more testing areas be more beneficial?
I suppose it could be. Uh, we can also use customers' homes, outside hose bibs for that, and we do that quite often. Yeah.
In the very back.
I was wondering, would it be to an advantage to the neighborhoods that are really having the problem to give them more fire hydrant cleansing on a more frequent basis than the problem, neighborhoods that aren't? The ones that are give it better blasts? Cause we just get, like, once a year, the, the little board comes out, we're gonna be flushing. And so, you know, we just don't let it get in our hot water tanks and stuff, but I mean, it would be maybe something that you could try to maybe do it four times a year. You know, just quarterly or, you know, or four times and see if you see people's homes having better results. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, we really rely on the customers to, you know, let us know where these problems are occurring in the distribution system. And we've been kicking around the idea of developing a map and a, you know, grouping these into problem areas, although we haven't had a lot since we started the new treatment plant up, up until recently. So we're going to start a map up and kinda try to identify the problem areas and then maybe flush more frequently in those areas.
And so, uh, I guess to start, the most beneficial would be to call our, uh, water department and let us know that you're having these issues. I have a list and there's three, there are four, four, five, maybe five people on it right now. So, um, you know, definitely call our office and just get on our radar so that we can help you, so.
And I believe Olympus is being flushed this week.
Right.
Is it this week or no?
I think it's September.
Olympus, September.
Okay. More questions in the very back.
Hello, thank you for coming all this way. We appreciate it very much. Um, I've been speaking with a lot of residents recently and I am getting people who are having problems and people who are not. One thing that I presented to council before was in regards to the lifetime chemicals, PFOS. And so I did make a call to your organization today and, um, Sophia called me back and she left me quite a voicemail. Wow, I didn't quite speak all the language, but it was very detailed. And the one thing that I did hear about, um, in regards to sort of the scheduling of testing, and this is for the lifetime chemicals, the PFOS, um, is that we're not actually due to be tested here until next June in 2024. So I don't think that's part of the arena of testing right now. And I just wondered, how can we be assured as residents that the maximum required worldly testing, state testing, federal testing, whatever it is, how can we be assured that everything is being tested? That should be. Is there some reference tool to that? And then the PFOS question? Thank you.
Yeah, we have a, um, online database we call Sentry Internet and you can look up, um, all the water quality data that's ever been tested for this, reported for the system. So, um, I think it goes back a very long time, it's pretty, pretty much anything that's ever been tested. Um, and if you want, I could send you a link to access that. We are in PFOS, I think it's just a new rule, we're rolling it out. So, um, we scheduled systems, um, based on, the first ones that were targeted were the ones that were, um, most likely to be at risk, like the, they were located near air force bases, places where certain firefighting foam and other things were used. Um, and then now it's moving towards larger systems and it's still, based on the scheduling, it was still implemented that way. And really the reason we don't just schedule it all at once is because there's a lab, the labs only have a certain amount of capacity. So if we scheduled them all at the same time, the labs couldn't handle it and then the system couldn't get their samples done. So there's nothing prohibiting the city from doing it sooner if they want. It's just that's when we put it on their schedules, so.
Thank you.
And we actually took part in the UCMR three in, uh, 2015 with the EPA. So that's, uh, it's the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule. And they're required to do, um, once every five years, a monitor for what might be, uh, new, I guess, I don't know if that's what it, but a new issue, I guess, would just be a new contaminant to add to the, uh, to give a maximum contaminant level. Um, and we were all non-detect on that, I believe. Um, our firefighting department switched to, um, PFOS free firefighting bubble, I'm not sure when, but, um, it was too long ago for them to remember, so, uh, that's, I guess, a good thing in this area. So we actually did test for that in 2015 and we argue for it, uh, next year.
Thank you.
More questions? Gina?
See, I knew I was gonna spill something. I wanna thank you very much for coming and I want to understand, because there's been some questions, and I'm sorry to put you guys on the spot, but I, I just wanna understand, when I was not living in this area, I would have somebody come by and take a sample from the hose bib of my water, even though I had not been using it, hadn't been here for a couple of months. They would take that sample, they would put a number on it, it was taken to the county. From that point, it had a date, the timestamp, had a log, it was sent to a, uh, water san, uh, water quality place and that would come back. And I would get a report and they would share that with my neighbors. But it appears that there have been samples that have been taken that, from a, from an independent house, but the results were sent to someone else's house. And I couldn't wrap my head around that and I can't wrap my head around the fact that if I have black slime in my house, why would you not have it on the hose bib? That, that just slays me because I'm thinking that it's all continuous piping. Can you enlighten me? Am I just not looking at this correctly?
Uh, so we haven't been able to test for that yet. Uh, that's our goal on Tuesday. I guess tomorrow, um, would be to expand on that a little bit and really pinpoint, uh, where it does and doesn't grow. But it's our theory that, um, the mold wouldn't grow in the hose bib because the, it doesn't stay warm and it doesn't stay wet. Right? So you have, uh, you know, a faucet inside that, you know, you keep your house at probably sixty-eight degrees or somewhere close to that. And, you know, um, it stays humid, it loses the chlorine residual as it sits there. I think it's volatilization, if I said that right? But, so that's our theory and we wanna move forward on that with our next round of testing and, um, just kinda go from there. Because our hose bib, or not our hose bibs, our sample points are outside, sticking out of the ground and they're covered, that's it. So they're the same, uh, general environment as a hose bib would be, where once they're not being used, they dry up and that's it. They don't stay wet, they don't stay warm. So, um, that, that would be our, our, our theory.
And I do wanna say thank you for starting that process. And I do want to say thank you for starting that process of trying to test for this and trying to find the origin. It's really important, especially if you have a compromised physical situation. It's very important, and I'm meeting more and more people who are having more problems. And the only thing that we can determine is water, so thank you.
Look, do we have anybody who has not asked a question, wants to ask a question from the public? Okay, so I'm going to come back to people that have raised their hand to do that, but Catherine has a question.
So, this is, this is a question about the wells themselves. We test the quality in all, I think we have said in here nine wells. We do a regular test of the water quality of the wells, and is there a difference between the deep wells and the shallow wells with regards to whatever we test if we do? I'm thinking about, people have mentioned herbicides, which may percolate through the ground.
So if you look at item number five on the table of contents, you'll see page 20 is our July 2023 daily testing results. So we take a collective raw water sample every morning. And so that's, I believe, orange in the column on there. Let me find it.
When you find it, will you tell us?
Yeah, it's right after the CCR. So the raw water is the green columns, and so we test for total water that we sent to the plant, and that's a million gallons per day. Total iron in that raw water, which is in milligrams per liter. Total manganese in milligrams per liter, the pH and the color of that. And so that's a collective raw water sample. So it's in the header pipe before it goes into our water treatment plant. Matt can probably expand a little more on the deep and shallow wells, but I'll turn it over to him.
Typically, we only sample the wells that are online and being used at the time. If we bring on a new well, before we bring that well on, we flush it, we test it, and then we bring it online. But like Ricky said, the way we operate all of our wells collectively come together at the treatment plant.
So that's where you test, not at the well itself?
For some.
Well, two, well three?
Yeah.
It's when it gets to the treatment plant?
Correct. We're using a shallow well field, so everything's collected that way.
I could add something to that, too. That's actually where they're required to sample. We, the source sampling is required to be collected after treatment, because that's the water that's representative of what's being served to the public. Also, our records show that the well field that they're using now, there's also a group of other wells, I can't remember if it's at higher, deeper, I don't know. But we have this classified as emergency, and that definition means they're not required to sample those regularly. So in order to bring those online, they would need to get those updated on testing. And also, because they're what, they're sources, I'll go through the treatment plant. They would need to talk with us about any water quality issues those sources might have if we're using them. So usually, emergency sources are just left there in case there's a real emergency, like something went down in their well field, and they're just trying to, you know, get water to the system to maintain, you know, some people flush their toilets and things. So they would need to contact us and work with us to decide whether or not they'd be on water advisory, or what kind of testing would be needed for us to be okay for them to start using them. But I think there's like five, four or five wells that are right now classified as emergency. So those are not, are not their normal watering schedule right now.
Okay, before I go to the, back to the public, Rich, did you have your hand up? Okay, then I saw, over the, yes, should you have an ask a question, go ahead.
First off, thank you guys for addressing this issue. I know a lot of people are concerned here, and, well, rightly so. I think everybody should be entitled to potable drinking water, something that they feel is safe when they turn on the spout. If all the tests at the, at the water treatment plant are coming out okay, it would only appear to me that there's something in your distribution system that's not working. Can you not go back to the city plans and check that distribution system and determine when it was laid and how they, it is operating today? Some of them might be old, some of them might be new. And all the new construction, too, could have something to do with this. There's definitely something wrong. And with the utility system here, it's their responsibility, I feel, to get this corrected so these people have drinking water. Can you answer that question about the infrastructure?
Our monitoring shows that there is not an issue in the distribution system, and we frequently have tapped the water main for these service connections, and we don't see any, you know, any coating on our pipe or any built-up scale. It's relatively clean when we do get into the water main. So, you know, I don't think the problem lies within the distribution system from what we see from our monitoring.
Okay, or Nani, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask you, you mentioned something about you guys test for E. coli. Usually, that would mean that there's a broken sewer line, or maybe somebody forgot to take out the septic tank, and so it's beginning to leach. I would think that you guys would be testing more for Liptosporosis because we have an abundance of wildlife in the area, especially right now. And how can I get on your list? I noticed that Canal Drive, there's not as much black stuff over there, because I used to live there, as opposed to the old waterways, like down by Island Circle. We have an abundance. In fact, I brought you a sample, if you wanted to see after the meeting. Gee, you can take a look and tell me if it's manganese. I have a filtration system, and they came over and did the testing of the water before they installed the filtration system. I didn't have to wait, it was like done, and then they showed me what I had in there. Is that something more like?
I can't tell by looking at it what it is, but something maybe the city wants to have or need to have tested.
So the filter, I guess my first question would be, if I could get a picture of the model number of it or any information on that, just to see if it's removing the chlorine. That would definitely make your issue worse with the black mold or the deposits. Thirdly, I guess, just, you know, call our water office, or I will put my business card out here on the table, and then on the way out, you can snap a picture of it, send me an email, and let me know when you want to get onto that list, so.
Yeah, well, I couldn't understand why it's less than octopus and more over there in Island Circle, so.
If you do have a filtration system there on Island Circle where you're removing the chlorine, that would make it, that would definitely make it worse.
But there's one in octopus, and there's not as much there than there is over in Island Circle.
So it would, it would just depend on, you know, the filtration process, or if there's lower flows in Island Circle than there was on octopus. There's a lot of factors that go into it, especially since we can't really figure out what's causing it yet. So the only thing right now is the low chlorine residual, well, won't inhibit it. So the best thing to do would be to get your chlorine residual up, and then it shouldn't be able to grow or really appear.
Okay.
I just want to speak to the coliform sampling, E. coli. It is something that's considered one of the highest risks. That's why they use 10 samples per month for coliform. They test both for, we call total coliform, and then also for peak coliform at every site. And total coliform is actually ubiquitous, it's everywhere in the environment, but it's not naturally in groundwater. So if it, if it comes where there's a bad test for that, it indicates there's some avenue where contamination's getting into the system, like it could be through a broken line or a breach in the reservoir, you know, different things.
So we're good, we don't have the Liptosporosis out here in the waterline?
That's not something that we've required testing for, but it's not something that we're sweeping testing, so. They, coliform is supposed to be an indicator that there could be, like, if that's there, then it would indicate there could be an avenue of contamination. If there's E. coli that never detected, the system would have to go under cold water. That was cleared up. I looked at the coliform history for the city, and they haven't had any bad coliform pests for as many years as I lived back, so that hasn't been an issue. Coliform bacteria hasn't been an issue, that's something that showed up, which I wouldn't, I would expect, wouldn't because of the chlorine that they're using. That would, if there was any kind of bacteria, that would kill the, kill it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Jane and then Michael.
So I just wanted to touch on what one of the previous speakers said about the distribution line. And you're pretty much adamant about it not being the distribution line, but during this conversation tonight, I believe it was Regina, if it wasn't, I don't remember who it was, but bringing up that there's a slimy buildup in the pipes. Manganese has been an issue here. I know that it was approximately two years that no flushing was done at all. I believe it was October of 2021 that prior flushing was done to our most frequent flushing done now. And so I guess I'm just looking to where you could give reassurance with everything that has been said here by Regina, by other things, by things we know, that until more testing is done on that distribution line or in different spots or in these trouble spots, that it's not coming from the distribution line?
Yeah, I didn't mean to sound adamant that we know that it's not in the distribution system, but according to the monitoring that we've done, that's the case today. We're not done investigating this by any means, and we'll go as far as we can to figure out what's going on. But as far as the monitoring we've done today, that's the case.
That's not a good answer.
And one more thing on top of that is the, I believe it was the complete ILC we did in residence. What's it, you know, we had talked to, or I had talked to Regina about, you know, the possibility of it being a manganese bacteria that was growing. But, you know, in a couple different samples where we tested inside a customer's home, complete ILC, which is, I think it's 28 different alloys that they test for. Manganese is on that, and it was at the detection level. So there's nothing saying that it's out of this world that we've seen if you look at our monthly report. I mean, you know, our total manganese in the finished water of the system is, I actually did some averages for the last year. In 2022, the manganese, the highest manganese was, was .013 milligrams per liter. We had an average of .007 milligrams per liter. And iron was even lower, it was .011 high, and then an average of .010 milligrams per liter. So, you know, we're, we're still trying to find out what it is, and, you know, like Matt said, we're definitely not done looking, so.
So that's, added on that, so the numbers you just gave me, so the tests that came back to the houses that were tested, the three original houses, said manganese was abundant.
So that's.
No number, what did you say?
If you look at that, there's, yeah, so that's, that's the kind of tough part. We have to clarify with the lab on that, but it's silicates resembling manganese, so there's no definite answer there on whether it is or not. But the sample we took prior to that at your, at your house was one of those that was at a manganese level that was at, it had to have been at or below the detection level. So if you don't have that still, I can send you a copy of it.
So you took, Matt took a sample and you took the sample?
It would have been the sample that Matt took.
Okay, so the sample you took is the one that says manganese is abundant?
That says that there's crystal silicates resembling manganese was abundant, is in the sample that I took. But that's a microscopic sample, so there's, you know, the quantifications on there is less than one, or maybe even greater, I think it was less than one per liter. So that, you know, typically means milligrams per liter, so we're still waiting on clarification for that.
Okay, so you, when you get that?
Yeah.
Michael.
So thank you guys for showing up. It's nice to get information from the horse's mouth here. And you've kept prepared a lot of information, I appreciate that. One thing I've talked about several times with Councilman Rich over here about the water issues on Mount Olympus. And we felt it was a problem with not getting enough water flow, especially with the flushing of the hydrants, to keep the chlorine up to proper level. And seeing all the new homes go in, I'm starting to think that might really have something to do with it. I have a fire hydrant right across the street from my driveway, and in six years, I've never seen it flushed. Now, it could have been flushed when I wasn't home, I don't know. But while I'm home, I've never seen that flush. I don't ever remember getting to notice that it was going to be flushed. Six years is a long time. And I bring that up because in a lot of other communities or cities, the fire department is actually the department that's in charge of flushing the fire hydrants. So my question is, could we get the fire department to team up with you guys to alleviate, you know, some of the work? So we can get around getting all these fire hydrants flushed properly and, you know, on more of a schedule? Now, I'm hearing it's not a set schedule, how he's done. I seriously believe we need to have some sort of schedule, whether it's once a year or every other year. But how do you feel about the fire department helping you guys out on that? Or do you even need the help?
That's been brought up before, having the fire department team up with us. And, you know, there's, just when you're flushing hydrants, you have to do it in a particular order and a particular procedure. And it would, it would be possible if they'd be, you know, willing to do that, but, you know, just for water system operations, it just doesn't really work.
Do I have any other questions? Jane?
Sorry, Jane's phone's being made a booboos. I know, we can. So thank you for clarifying, that was one of my questions, clarifying as far as flushing, because I've heard some people say, well, why don't we just go in and flush Mount Olympus and things like this? And so I just wanted that to be one of the things, knowing that you can't just go in and flush the middle of the system, that there's a certain procedure and sequence that you need to do with that. With the, one of the things that Regina brought up is distance from wells. Because I'll admit it, this has been one of my concerns, seeing the testing and how many years back we've tested certain things, and why is it? And I understand why waivers are put in place. And you said part of it was because of distance to the wells. And I was wondering if any of this was factored in as far as the golf course pulls out of the canals in certain areas, and I believe Duck Lake also, to irrigate the golf course, which runs throughout, as we know, throughout most of ocean shores. So was any of that factored in as to irrigation being used from those canals in the areas? And does that affect with the distance of those wells also?
Sophia evaluated that, so I really can't say, but do you mean that that's irrigation happens next to the wells?
Yes, that's what I'm wondering, if that distance was taken in consideration or it was even known, if it was even known that they were using water from the canals to irrigate the golf course? Because part of the golf course is very close to the water plant.
Yeah, that would be a good question if all was, Sophia, I don't want to say wrong thing.
Okay.
Just for information on that, there's two separate permits from the Department of Ecology. One is for our wells for domestic purposes, and then there's a surface water rec permit for the golf course for irrigation purposes only.
Well, I guess my question, that doesn't quite answer, though. She said it's done off a distance, and so I just didn't know if they were aware of the distance that the irrigation is doing to the proximity of the wells. It, when they were, when they were issuing is doing to the proximity of the wells. When they were, when they were issuing waivers, if that was part of what they considered when they
We were looking at, if I remember correctly, was to the canals themselves. So not, we didn't, I don't think Sophia looked at irrigation. I think about it. But I don't see how that would.
Well, you have, you have
I guess you could, well, part of it, I think, I remember we talked about di quad as being one of the ones that was used. That, one reason that we didn't lift the waiver for that is that it doesn't travel through soil very well at all. So I think, you know, we checked with Sophia. But I guess I'd wonder, even if it was being applied to the ground, you know, considering the duck to the water cable along with that horizontal distance, I don't know if that would change or not. But Sophia would be the one that would make that call.
Yes, that's something we can check into because it's not just irrigation out there. But of course, we know people use chemicals and everything else on their personal lot. So, all right, thank you.
Over in the corner?
Me?
Yes.
Just one quick question. If we took an independent water sample from one of the faucets that has the black slime coming out, could you tell us what independent lab to send that to?
We have a list of, EPA has, Department of Ecology has a list of accredited labs. So I could get your name and send you a link to that if you want.
Send it to Jane because she's, I think you already have her information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have any, Ricky?
I also wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the table of contents, item number six, the herb site and organic compounds analysis pages 21 to 37, that was our most recent sample of herb side and pesticide samples that we took since people were concerned about it. And, you know, like Regina said, they try to schedule this stuff differently so that the labs don't get overwhelmed. The lab that we sent those to ended up having to send it out to Burlington and had it tested. And we just got these back, I believe, seven 26, 23. So not super long ago. And everything was a non-detect besides one compound that was just about less than half of the MCL. So.
What was that compound?
I probably shouldn't even give it a shot. It was DOH number item, DOH number 125.
Thank you, Regina.
Do I have any more public before I go back to council? In the very back.
Thank you again. And I just wanted to ask on behalf of some voices that are coming to me here in the room, how will we know kind of a follow-up on everything? Would that be something maybe Scott could help with or putting out on the radio station, articles in the newspapers, something to be able to communicate with the community members?
When we get done with the questions, then we'll do a wrap up of what the next steps are. So any other questions from the audience? Okay, Richard?
So my question, I think is primarily for Matt, and it addresses the hydrant that has not been flushed for six years. My concept of what you flush, you don't flush every hydrant, you flush endpoints, it would be my guess. Is that correct?
We flush every hydrant that we can without flooding out a resident or causing property damage. I can, I can attest that that hydrant has been flushed every time we flushed. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the audience, questions from the council? Jane?
I just have one that came up. So when someone, what is, what is the standard procedure when someone calls in with a complaint? Either one, whoever wants to answer it, go for it, Ricky?
So right now, our standard procedure is pretty much just, you know, okay, well, I guess it just depends on the complaint. But first one would be making sure that they don't have any in-house treatment that's going to change the water chemistry and also the water softeners or house filters that remove chlorine. So then the second thing would be if it's, if it's, you know, like a smell concern, I might ask about maintenance on any other household items like flushing hot water tanks every year, you know, changing out those filters if they are there or, you know, pretty much anything like that. If they've been gone in extended periods of time, a lot of people will call about stagnant water at the house when they, you know, come back for vacation. Usually if they just flush from the back goes, they fix it, so.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought part of the cross connection control was when someone calls, you know, complaint, it's to do a sample. Is that the next step after the ones you just said or?
So the cross connection control program has nothing to do with really aesthetic water quality issues. The, the big part there is actual containment into the distribution system as far as the cross connection control program.
Okay. I thought that, and so I'm just asking because I've read that when, when someone files a complaint, that it's the CCS, whoever the certified is, is supposed to come take a sample of that water.
That, that could be true in some municipalities. That could be part of the CCS duties. I know right now it's, it's not. It's just, you know, it could be someone from the water treatment team or someone from the water distribution team. And, you know, like I said, it really depends on what the, what the issue is.
Okay. Okay. And then as far as, this came up earlier and I don't think it had got addressed. Instead, is it common practice to take samples from someone's home but not from others and then send those people that you, so it, it came to me that someone received the test results from three of the homes that were tested. Instead of having their water tested, they were just given the test results from other homes. Is that standard practice?
So that, that comes into play with, you know, I think I know what customer you're talking to and called and asked about the issue. And I said, well, we just finished our first round of testing and have our results here if you would like to look at them. And so that's, you know, like I said, that's my, my list that I have of people that are having the issue with the black slime. I said, you know, he's added to the list and will be considered as a sampling point in the future for any more testing we're doing.
Okay. So that would be my next question. Instead of putting people on a list and just sending them other test results, if you're going to do individual testing at their homes particularly when they, when they request?
Yeah. So it's, it's, you know, more of a, an update thing. So, you know, if, if, you know, say someone else on that list found a solution that worked for getting rid of it, you would probably rather I share that with you as well than anyone else on that list.
Correct.
So it's just a kind of an update as we go. And then, you know, I guess it's, it's, you know, any personal information is redacted from those lists, like in the packet tonight.
Yeah.
It's, you know, if the customer is concerned and wants a water sample taken, and that's definitely an idea that can be explored. But, you know, these, these sample bottles that we're getting come from a lab in Tacoma. So we, they're expensive tests and we have to order certain bottles for it. We don't just grab an empty Pepsi bottle and go take the sample. I wish we could. But, you know, so it's, it's, we have to special order these bottles and quantify how many we need and then what kinds of tests we can do.
Okay. Just, just going forward with, with the complaints and trying to, if you're really trying to get to the bottom of this issue, if they're in known areas or things like that, then I just, you know, my, my personal opinion is we need to check all those homes so we can maybe get to the bottom of this issue instead of just, you know, providing others with a test. I understand if there's a solution, yeah, throw it out there everywhere. I know plenty of people will look.
So like you said, it's kind of a general area thing, you know, if one area is affected, then it's safe to say that there's maybe more than one person with that issue. So what, what we've started to do is, you know, I have that list. I'm putting pins on a map and trying to figure out these problematic areas that are affected. But really, I get no help on them before people have called the office and complained about it. So, you know, like I said, I'll leave my business card out here and we can expand that list and hopefully figure it out sooner.
Okay. I have directed many people in your, your way, whether they have actually followed her or not. You know, I put it out there and Regina was helpful on that. So just call Ricky and Ricky will take care of you, you know. So I do appreciate all of that. I just know with the one sample test that was given out, I know that the location wasn't close to the homes that were tested. So that's why it was just kind of concerning to me. But I do understand your, your point on that. Thank you.
I just kind of have to, regarding the complaints, it actually is very helpful to different customers call in because it lets the utility know where there are issues. And one thing you mentioned was backflow issues. That's actually one thing that if you, there is an issue with water quality, sometimes if there was a backflow incident, that actually could be something that could look into because there might have been a change in something. That's one part of a response to a backflow issue. So both at where I work with Department of Health and also the utility, if customers have any issue with their water, anything, especially anything that's changed from what they're normally used to, it's really valuable to have that input from, from the customers. So, thank you.
Do you have one more question? Yes?
Yes.
Hi Regina, can you tell us if there are any other municipalities in the county that are experiencing similar problems as we are?
Not that I know of. This is actually the first time I've had this complaint. I've worked at Department of Health for quite a long time. So Steve, you go on.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any questions before I talk about what, what my view is what our next steps are? Number one, water safety is a very important thing. And we take the lead from Department of Health, making sure that our water is safe. The, when we put the MYLAX system in place in 2011, that was a $7 million cost to the system that put in there. I would say, because I was here before, our waters, water has dramatically improved from where it is. Now, we do come off of wells and we also saw improvement when we went to the deep well from this to shallow wells. However, I hear what people are saying about concerns. And my takeaway is that we should test for manganese just to see where we are, although there's not really kind of guidelines for that. We can take a look at chemicals being added, adding the, changing the chlorine, take a look and see if we have it. We've already started the process of having a more system for flushing. And Ricky is taking, or creating the list of our problem parts that we have within the city. And we'll, we'll do dramatically more flushing in those areas, you know, that again, our water department is very capable of flushing it. I would be concerned of having our fire department because then you have the issues of the fire department being called on calls and inconsistency with the program is to do that. I do believe just because, well, first of all, we as a city did not do the flushing during the COVID period. And that obviously we're catching up right now. We also did not have the programs on the backflow that it should, should be. And then we're going to put that in place. But probably we're going to need to add an additional position in order to follow that up. In almost all other small cities, in order to get that completed, you need to have a person that is focused on that. So that would be something that the council would have to make that decision with, what to do, but in order to get to compliance. But once the compliance is in place, and it could maybe be somewhere, I don't know, the, the system is in place is, should be pretty consistent. We, in talking with Ricky and Matt, you know, that as far as residential, there's going to be actually very few places unless they have an irrigation system or multiple stories that are going to be impacted with backflow with it. So then we'll work through it with that. But Ricky has a plan in order to get that. We will, we will continue to communicate through web page, our webpage, as well as the water report of everything that we're going, going through as far as doing additional sampling. We definitely can do that. And that's something that Ricky has committed to myself now that we've got the, I didn't realize how much difficulty it is getting the sample bottles, that you have to have a special one. I think you could order them off of, I don't know, Amazon, but apparently not. And I think that anyone that has called Ricky, I, I believe that he's been very responsive of trying to find out the solution. So I am, along with everybody else, interested in finding what we can do to solve, solve the issue. And then, then we're still in that investigative period of time. And we will keep you up to date on what we're going to do. But the two takeaways, taking a look and see what we can do with flushing, what can we do for testing for manganese, and then possibly making adjustments on chlorine. So that's kind of where I believe where the city needs to be. But again, ultimately it's the council that's going to make any real decisions. Yes?
Yeah. So on that, what I'd kind of like to see in, in line with that is, and a council, obviously not this next one, but one that when we get the information, because there's a lot of information we need to get. And I, I agree, we need to, you know, make sure we know what this problem is, what it takes, what it's going to take to fix this problem, and then take those steps to do that. But what we also need to know is on the testing, it's sounding like, you know, doing a whole lot more testing. And I know those aren't cheap, especially when you're doing culture tests that take two months. Those are not cheap. But they're worth doing. So what would help, I think, the council here is to get all of that information. How much are these tests? How much are we looking at doing of these tests? How much is a new, you know, what, what actually is it going to take to get to the water department to the level that we're asking you guys to be at with doing the cross connections, with doing everything that is being asked, which I appreciate everybody asking, what's that going to take? And then we need to know what's going to be the cost and how can we do that? So that's what I'd like to see happen.
I just said, oh, we have the expert here in front of everyone. So yeah, obviously the increasing flushing, finding those hot spots that we want to find, hiring a cross control system specialist. Is there anything else finally before we break tonight that you would recommend we do as a city?
Once, just make sure your city, your cross drainage control program and your city ordinance match what you're currently implementing. So they, they're, some of them are, don't change over time. They just make sure it's consistent. I think also, one thing someone mentioned one time was the building department versus your water system and evaluating cross connections. Maybe clarifying the authority of what your building department is responsible for evaluating versus your water system. Typically, it's in anything on the property inside a building. It is, like at a hospital or something like that, would be evaluated by your building department. So, and then I think I'd cover.
Again, I thank you very much.
Counsel, anything else before we adjourn? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.